I'm going to call the October 11th, 2016, meeting of the Norton Planning Board to order. And all members are present this evening except for Mr. Fernandez. Before we get started, I know there are some people here at our last meeting. I just want to clarify, we did continue one zoning amendment hearing, and that was for the notification article, Article 16. The articles for the zoning changes, both on Leonard Street and Route 140, have been tabled, and they're not on the warrant this year. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear what they're here for. Okay, so we do have a public hearing starting at 7:20. We're going to start our business, regular agenda, and then we'll have to, we'll go to the public hearings after that, as required. And before, also, before we move on, I want to, this is Beth Worley's last meeting, as our planning and economic development director, so I do want to thank her for her service, and I appreciate all the work she's done for the board, and wish you best in your new job.
Thank you, yeah.
So we have the A and R here for Newcombe and Newland Street in our packets. And we do have the Beth's report on the proposal.
So this is a property on the corner of Newcombe and Newland Street, and it is approximately 35.8 acres, located in the 80 zoning district. The applicant is proposing to create Lot 19, 20, 21, 22, 23 from the existing Lot 17. All the lots meet the requirements for Lot 20's frontage and access to the planning plan as submitted.
This is more land from Daggett. Seems like they're naming the potential subdivision here. Any questions? These are, proven that required plans are relatively straightforward, as long as we have the required frontage and lot markings, basically.
Do you approve the plan on Newland Street?
So can you just Lot 18, or missing Lot 18?
Yeah, Lot 18, 18, 19, 20, 21.
Go ahead and add 18 to the next.
18 is 5900.
Fifty thousand.
No, 18 is 5900.
So if you look at detail up here, this lander is, should say on the other side. Lot 18 is not to be considered a developable lot, it's going to be reserved, I think, for access in the future.
Same owner, though, of the property? Lot 18?
Yeah.
Which is Daggett.
Yeah, and it's labeled not as separate, it's a little lot.
Okay.
So, it may be reserving land for a future subdivision road, which we're not judging at this point, but there's access through the, to the rear, that area. Alright, so we have a motion, and a, here a second. I'll take a vote. Right, Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jersik?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I will also vote yes. My large a sign here. Way for NOAA, that's the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric.
National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association.
Thank you very much, Peter.
Welcome, Peter.
So it's for a special permit for a Section 4 penalty use, to allow the construction of industrial building which equals or exceeds 10,000 square feet, and also for a site plan for a 12,000 square foot building office for the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Building with lighting, landscaping, parking, and infrastructure. We did get a request from Mark Dibb from Condyne Engineering Group to continue this hearing. His email says, "We're going to be meeting with the government officials involved with the NOAA project this week in order to wrap it up and move along final design. At this point, we think it would be best to continue to the next meeting so we can move forward with the appropriate design. Please consider this a request to continue tonight's meeting." Do we have a timeframe that we want to continue to?
October 25th at 7:20.
Okay, so do we have a motion to continue public hearing to October 25th at 7:20?
I won't be here on the 25th.
You won't be here on the 25th?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody else potentially missing?
Yes.
We don't have Joe Fernandez, do we? We would need five to open it, we would have five members then. So if you miss one, then you can, you can make it up.
Sure.
Do you want to continue?
Okay, motion, I'll take a vote then, Mr. Jersik?
Yes.
Sorry, usually sitting first. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I will also vote yes. Next, I'm going to open the public hearing, which is a continuance from our last meeting. This is for Article 12, Article 12, zoning amendment, Section 12.2, Point B, and 12.4. Now, this was an article to amend the, our notification requirements. So just to give a little background to be clear, the reason we put this forward is that particularly the requirements to post a sign at least two feet square with a date, time, and place of public hearing on the boundaries of all the land, including such an amendment, in any kind of zoning amendment, is very onerous for the board, because we have to print the signs in advance, if there's a change in meeting venue, we can't accommodate that. So we're looking to have a more efficient and better way to notify the public about any proposed changes in the zoning amendment, and so that was the genesis for this amendment. So we heard loud and clear that a lot of people were not happy with this change, so I don't know if the boards has some time to think about.
Was there any discussion with town council about notification?
As far as the Mansfield Ave and Leonard Street, or anything in general?
Anything in general.
The general notice to the abutters of the land on Leonard and Mansfield Street was appropriate because of the widespread nature, according to town council. However, if it were one property or two properties, notification of the abutters would be a simple process to do.
Sure.
And they recommend if you are going to require notification, the cost to the town, something to the effect of maybe just a general mailing, not certified. Certified mailing with the state is not required.
So I think, I think that the issue is that what is, what's the tipping point between something that's specific to one or two parcels, a one that's of general, you know, a more general change in a broader area of town? What defines that point where one becomes the other? So, I mean, that's.
That's not defined, which is also something town council said is not defined in your bylaws, so if you do want to go that way, then you need to clearly define what that means.
Right.
Abutter is not defined in our bylaws.
But in terms of the notification to the property owners, what is it?
The property owners themselves that would be rezoned?
Right.
Do need to be notified.
But what's the means that we're?
Well, we send a general mail right now.
Okay, so right now, general mail?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which is what Mass General law requires.
Okay.
Which I think is the appropriate way, because if you have a very large mailing, then this become, what's our budget for printing and mailing for the year?
Not much, $500.
$500 a year? I mean, we, so we, I'll get to the audience, so I'm just going to talk to them on the board first. So, the planning board doesn't have the budget to have any kind of massive mailing. So I think a general mailing to the, certainly the affected landowners?
Yeah.
Would be appropriate.
Right.
The other question becomes, at what point?
How do we notify the abutters?
Right, do you notify abutters? How do you notify the abutters? What's an effective way to do it? We, I think by law, we have to put a notice in the paper, correct?
You absolutely do, you have to put it in the newspaper, you have to post it in the town hall so many days before the public hearings.
Right.
And the posting in the newspaper has to be so many days before the public hearing. The notice to property owners, notice to abutting communities, those are all requirements. DHCD, our regional planning agency, those are already covered in Mass General law.
Mm-hmm.
Mass General law does not stipulate how you notify any property abutters.
So under the general law, Chapter 48, Section 5, that specifies?
Who you need to notify.
Who you need to notify.
Right. Property owners.
Mm-hmm.
You have to notify in the newspaper, you have to notify in the town hall, you have to notify DHCD, which is our Department of Housing and Community Development, you have to notify the Regional Planning Agency, and that's the requirement.
But it sounded like, at least from my point, that the board of selectmen would like us to send certified mail to all the abutters.
The board of selectmen, from my understanding?
Yeah.
As well as the town manager, would like to see a general mailing.
A general mailing, so they've changed their, they've changed their mind now?
If the planning board sees fit to require notification of abutters.
Yep.
Certified mail is too expensive, so general mail.
Right, so the question?
Yeah, I mean, I think general mail is fine regardless, I mean, either way, if it's property owners or abutters, I don't see an issue with that.
I just, I want a clarification, because they were all high and mighty about sending certified mail to everybody, and?
That's changed.
That's changed.
Right, because it's.
Because the reality of the budget actually came.
The reality of, A, having the staff to do it.
I think it's almost, if I remember correctly, it's almost $6 a certified letter now.
Yeah.
Alright, so in general consensus that the landowners should be notified, and then the question becomes, what about the abutters, and how far do you go?
I think you notify the abutters.
I would agree.
Immediate abutters.
But we have to define abutters, then.
Yeah.
They need to be defined, so it's a butters.
Planning board currently, when you ask for an abutters list through the assessors office, it's any property within 300 feet of a property. So if you have 17 properties in a rezone?
Yep.
It'll be 300 feet from each one of those 17 properties, which could give you?
So a 300-foot radius from the center of that?
Of each property.
Of each property.
Of each property, yeah, that's what I mean, of each property.
The 17 properties.
From boundary lines, okay, so 300 feet.
You could have hundreds of people involved.
The Mansfield Ave one would be significant.
Yeah. That's 100 yards.
So.
So you do it.
Right.
It's, it seems to me, in the, the input we've gotten from the last public hearing, is we have to send out an abutters list, and a butters notification, and so if our regular routine was to send it, you know, 300 feet around a property, that's what we do.
That's typical. That is your normal, yep.
Yeah. I agree with that.
It's that simple.
Right. Right, because it's clear, people want to know what's going on, not everybody reads legal notices, I mean, you have to put them in by law, but I don't.
Yeah, I have a problem with that at all.
I read the legal notices, I'm on the board here, but I'm not sure people regularly read legal notices.
Oh, yeah.
Right, yeah.
So I think there needs to be.
And which, you know, which newspaper does it need to be in?
It has to be in the Sun Chronicle.
Just the Sun Chronicle, that's the chosen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It has the widest circulation.
And just to understand, because with the last public hearing, were the property owners, were they mailed the notification? They were, as well, okay, so just the property owners were?
Absolutely, I have to.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, I just wanted to be clear, because there was, there seemed to be a lot of confusion in the crowd.
It was about abutters.
The butters, okay.
Not property owners, that's a legal requirement in Mass General law, to do that.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Okay. Any other question or comment?
So Chapter 48, Section 5, doesn't it have any social media or online notification?
No. These are legal requirements.
Okay.
So, I mean, the town, you can sign up for town notices?
Okay.
You know, and I don't know what the process is to do, I mean, I went on our website and signed up, but it seems to me like when you get your annual census every year, if there's a little note that says if you want to sign up for town news?
I'm not entirely sure what gets sent out in that notice, I can certainly find out.
Do we have a? Because legally, newspaper has to be notified, but newspapers are ranked fourth where people get their news and information.
But it's a legal require, so there's legal requirements for this?
Oh, sure, I'm just saying how it's out of date, because.
No, I understand, social media is a big component of a lot of people, younger people too.
Part of the town is a Facebook page.
We don't, no.
We don't.
But it's not legally required that social media is used, it's not a recognized form of hosting a meeting.
There could be, but there is, you can sign up to get notices from the town.
Doesn't have to be posted on the town website?
We do.
We do post them.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
If you go to the planning board page, it's there.
It was posted on the planning board page, it was posted on the main page, it was posted on the calendar, yes.
So maybe we can find, I don't know if you can necessarily require it in our, in our bylaw, but we, if there's a way to inform people that they can sign up for email notices from the town, then it seems to be, everybody gets an annual census every year, and that might be the most effective way to get the word out.
So going forward for this, when you advertise a public hearing for a bylaw change, you can remove things, but you can't add things or make it more restrictive. So in, in here, under 12.2. B, the last sentence, "General notice will serve where the proposed amendment is of universal or wide application to the town," is that something you'd like to consider striking out, since you want to add in the notification to abutters within 300 feet?
Well, we, we have amendments to zoning which are not, don't affect a specific property, sign bylaws and things of that sort, so there still needs to be some sort of mechanism for a general notice.
So I guess what my concern is that if you want to add something in that talks about what an abutter is considered?
Mm-hmm.
That wasn't advertised.
Okay.
So I can check with town council on how you can proceed, whether you can proceed as it currently states now, and then in the spring add that sentence defining what an abutter is, or what you want to do.
Why not just do it all at once, and?
Because the butters not defined.
I totally understand that, why not just take this off the table altogether? We rework it so you have the butters defined there?
So you're saying, don't bring it up at this town meeting, bring it up in the spring?
Yeah.
It would probably be very helpful to move forward with what you currently have, so you can remove that two-foot, two-foot square sign?
Right.
Oh, okay.
For future zoning.
Yep.
Not changes.
That probably wouldn't fly.
So if you, if you struck out this, if you just struck out abutting communities, and the posting of the signs, so a 12.4, I think, is, 12.4, I think, is fine, is prepared, but it was the striking of the mail to all property owners according to latest tax work, and included with it an abutting land subject to the amendment, that should be included.
So you want to include that?
Yeah, keep that in.
Keep that in, but I don't think necessarily abutting communities need to know, the regional planning agencies?
They have to, they have to.
Okay?
Mass General law requires abutting communities.
Alright, let's keep that in.
Abutting communities and the regional planning agency.
So the only change then in 12 to B would be the change of 60 to 65 days?
65 days is what's required in Mass General law.
Right, yeah, but keep, that, that will be the change, but we're not going to delete the mail it's all property owners, that's going to remain, correct?
You can keep that, but you do need to, in a future meeting, define what an abutting is.
An abutter.
Yeah, yeah.
The 300 feet.
Because then you're still in the same boat that.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And what about the sentence completed according to the requirements of Mass General law? So put that in there in case Mass General law changes, and then you don't have to update your bylaw to be consistent with what Mass General law.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Yep.
So I will run it by town council to make sure that's okay to do, and can let you know, but if you want to vote in that respect?
I know some people want to speak, so I want to let them.
Can you run by the abutter notification that we currently have, too?
Abutter notification?
Yeah.
Currently?
Well, no, the, the one that we want to stick into, like a 12, was it 12.2.C?
The 300 feet.
The 300 feet?
What you want, yeah, I can, I can do that, but you can't do it for this town meeting.
I totally understand, just so that.
I'll have something developed for you for the future town meeting, how's that?
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I know, if you could come to the podium and state your name, please?
My name is Maureen Schrozinski, I live at 283 East Main Street, Unit Number 15, and I'm president of the Kingsbury Hill Condominium Association. Thank you for your consideration of a butters, but I think since the zoning board does have requirement that butters be, butters be notified for any large development, that there must be already a definition for a butter someplace, either in the zoning bylaws or other, but there's none, then how did all the individuals in 283 East Main Street get notified of the 274 East Main Street project?
So there are certain requirements described in Mass General law for what needs to be done for public hearings, for planning boards, special permits, there's some town bylaws, zoning bylaws for zoning board, that are clearly defined in Mass General law, and that is 300 feet.
So that you can just adopt that definition if you say you're going by Mass General laws?
Right.
Right, I'm not an attorney, but I will tell you that I spent most of the weekend going over Chapter 48 of the zoning Mass General laws. And so the questions I have, what newspaper came up? You said the Sun Chronicle, but on certain sides of Norton, I think people still rely on the Taunton Daily Gazette, not the Sun Chronicle, so should it not be two surrounding town newspapers?
The town has designated the Sun Chronicle as their newspaper of choice.
Then the other question I have is that it does say in the Mass General laws that the notice has to be placed in a conspicuous place in city or town hall. Where is the conspicuous place in the town hall?
Out the door here, there's a bulletin board.
That, so unless you come into town hall, you can't see it, so to me, that's not conspicuous. I would think it would need to be on the exterior of the town hall someplace, so if people come after work before the town hall's open, they can see it. So I don't think all the way up here in here is considered a conspicuous place.
Maybe you can talk to Mr. Units about putting it on the information thing?
It is.
Oh, is it on there?
Yeah.
So is it my understanding that then you're?
On the sign outside?
It was.
It was?
The notice of the hearing on the zone, industrial zoning changes was on the sign outside?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I go by a lot, and I missed it, so, so is it my understanding that you're going to leave in, that you are going to notify abutters within the area of the proposed changes?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and I guess the discussion on finances is concerning that, because the town is saying, especially for the change to industrial, that it may bring in $800,000 in revenue to the town. The property owners in the area that's going to be rezoned are clearly going to use, lose value on their homes.
I think that's something probably you want to talk to the board of selectmen about.
No, but I'm just saying, in terms of the cost of mailing, the discussion would seem moot in given the fact that, one, the town's going to get revenue, and the town has given significant tax breaks to some of the industries coming in. So to say the town can't afford to notify the taxpayers, sort of, to me, is not serving the best interests of the taxpayers.
And that's why we're going to do the way we're going to do it.
Well, thank you for considering that, because I know there are a number of people, and I feel so well-informed on the Mass General laws body, so I'll be here a lot, I guess. Thank you.
Next time there's an opening, the planning board, you know, always look for people.
Thank you.
Alright, so anyone else want to speak on this?
I'm John Thurlow, 89 Burt Street. I'm heartened by the fact that you want to leave the wording in about the notification of abutters in the town law. I just want to point out, I happen to have a copy of 48, Section 5, here, and after reading through it, if you do leave that in, you're putting yourself on the hook to notify all the surrounding towns. So I'd be happy to, if you guys want to cruise through this.
Yeah, we have.
Have to notify surrounding towns.
Okay, and if you haven't decided what a general, there seems to be a, a problem with notifying the local abutters, and the general law only says you have to notify non-residents that are abutters.
By notice, if they request it.
So, yes, if they request it, and then you'd have to calculate what fee to charge manually. So I'd be happy to leave this with you guys, if you want to just take a pause for a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have any comments or, on this?
Greg Vincent, 23 Reservoir Street. One of the suggestions I wanted to make, and you touched on it a little, you mentioned it in the census, and, you know, we get a water bill, we get a tax bill, and what I'm thinking is, is you, you put in a slip of paper in there, listing what things you want to be notified on, you give them your, and when you return your payment, you also return it with your email address, the town has a database that it can then send out and notify. And the census was another one, but I think it's a great idea.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I know it's not accepted, but I think moving forward, printed paper, nobody really gets printed paper anymore, and I think this would be very good at notifying and keeping the community, and the people can decide whether they want to be notified or not be notified, if they're on the list, or they can be taken off the list or added to the list. And I wanted to, I'm the one who brought up the whole thing of the butters at the last meeting, and the definition is definitely needed as to what it defines in an butter. Now, you're saying 300 feet?
That's a typical.
Does that cross roads as well?
It's 300 feet, so if you have a property, a simple diagram, it's 300 feet in a circle around here, 300 feet around this property.
So then?
It'll cross the road.
When they rezone the property, the land, we can land on Reservoir 140, nobody, because there's a street there, we didn't get notified?
No. If it's within 300 feet, and it crosses over the street, any part of that radius that touches a property that's within 300 feet.
So everybody on Reservoir Street should have gotten a notice?
No. It's, it's, the confusion lies in, in what becomes a general notice when the proposed amendment is of universal wide application to the town. So that was the confusion. Going forward, this is a proposed amendment to our bylaws, so the next time a notification goes out, an abutters will be.
What is going to define the breakpoint as far as a butters?
300 feet.
300 feet.
300 feet.
Because there's 30 homes on Reservoir Street, and there's another 12 along Mansfield.
If they're within 300 feet, they'll.
So it's under, under 50 homes, 50 people that have to be notified.
Right, right.
That's a typical.
That's what I'm saying, we got to, we got to define whether it's distance, not just 300 feet.
300 feet, I mean, what do you want us to do? I mean, could we, could we go to 100 feet? Then people at 200 feet will be upset.
No, no, leave it at 300, I like it better, the more the merrier.
And as we said, there, it's also intent to get general notice out to people, but, you know, but I don't think we can knock on everybody's door and let them know what's going on either, so, you know, we have, we have to find a balance.
And hopefully the board of selectmen, before they put these two back up again, will have a general meeting for the entire town or the people that are affected, so that you have a better idea of what's going on before it comes to us, and then, you know, we have an interaction which doesn't work.
Okay.
You know, if the board of selectmen sits down in a, in a town hall-style meeting and say, "This is what we want to do on Burt's." say, this is what we want to do on Burt Street, this is what we want to do on Reservoir and on Mansfield Ave, and this is why we want to do it, you'll have a better idea of their, their thought process behind it, instead of hearing that, you know, there's going to be a power plant going up on Burt Street. Or whatever street, which is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. So hopefully they decide that they want to put, push this through, they'll actually have a meeting so that you guys can get informed of what's going to happen.
Yeah, I think more notification, notification is better than less notification.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, so what we, oh, sorry, oh, gosh.
Is the 300 feet going to be decided now or will that be taken up later?
It'll be taken up-
We can't add it in now.
We can't add it in now because it's already been notified this way?
We wanted it to clear.
Right. And what we're doing right now is just putting this process into our bylaws, so the next time the zoning amendment comes up, we, we have, we've clarified the process, yes.
But this has to go to town meeting?
Correct, correct. Right, correct. So all we're doing tonight is to recommending the language, to go to town meeting, and recommending this to town meeting. Town meeting will then have to vote on this.
When will we see the change in the language? Because if this goes to town meeting, you're dropping out the butters because it says-
No, 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 no. What's we're doing tonight is modifying the language. So-
But is the modification going to town meeting next week?
If town council says it's acceptable, then your recommendation to include that language will-
But here's the notice that went out, here's the, has the italicized language is being dropped out, and the italicized language drops out the abutters. So I'm saying, are you going to rewrite this?
Yes.
And will it be posted for everyone to see?
We'll rewrite it tomorrow, and it's not up to me how that is handled, so I'll give it to the appropriate people.
Doesn't it have to be posted in a defined amount of time before the town meeting?
The general intent of the bylaw has to be posted, but the, the board can, in the process of public hearing, modify the language. So that's what we're doing with, with what we had last time and then this meeting.
Well, and, and just, I think you saw it at the, at the other meeting, the sense of trust that it will come out the way that you're saying is low in the community, given how this went about the first time. So I'm just saying, when will we be able to see the change language that's going to town?
I will write it tomorrow. I will forward it to the town manager's office, and from there, they handle how it's publicized.
And will it be handed out probably at the town meeting?
It will be, I believe it will be in the warrant.
It'll be on the warrant.
Because if I read the Mass General Laws, chapter 48, if it's, two-thirds of a vote of the town meeting could negate this-
Yes.
And then you can't do it for two more years, as chapter 48 defines. So the risk of not having the language beforehand, given the concern about this, may risk it being overturned.
Also, also, for some reason, it doesn't show up there, but you, you can amend, you know, you can amend an article on the town meeting floor also, so.
Which is, yeah, and you can do it for, I mean, here's the story that we were told by individuals who work within the town, that if you go to a town meeting and even if you vote something down, if you leave, when you leave, they'll bring it up for reconsideration and change it. So that's where the sense of mistrust comes from?
That's been like that forever.
I know. So you got to stay till the end to make sure-
You always have to stay till the end.
He always makes that clear at the start of the meeting, too.
Right.
And can, can someone in the town vote, make a motion for reconsideration, or is it only come from the select-
They always do.
Anyone can.
Anyone's a registered voter can go to town meeting.
And it is my understanding for Mass General Laws, that you can have more than what's in the chapter 48, as long as you comply with 48 and you don't have less. So if you comply with 48, you can have more. 48 doesn't mention resident abutters, but you could have that as long as everything else you have complies with the law, correct? So you can go over and above it. Thank you.
And I think it's two articles go, go through and then they ask for reconsideration, right?
Right.
Typically.
Right. So just to clarify, so in 12.2. B, we're keeping-
The struck out language.
Keeping the, the language as in struck out and adding in, completed according to the requirements of General Laws, chapter 48, section 5. That's the intent of what we're going to recommend to town meeting.
Could we have the whole thing read from?
Sure, I'll read it.
Sure.
So for article 16, the recommendation for 12.2B will be, the planning board shall hold a public hearing duly advertised as required by General Laws, chapter 48, section 5, on any proposed amendment referred to it by the Board of Selectmen within 65 days. So that's a change of such referral. Notice of such hearing shall be mailed to all property owners according to the latest tax record included within or abutting lands subject to amendment. Abutting communities and the regional planning agency, completed according to the requirements of General Laws, chapter 48, section 5. We are keeping in general notice will serve where the proposed amendment is of universal or wide application to the town, because not all zoning amendments refer to specific properties. Okay? So that's the intent of what the board is going to recommend to town meeting. On 12.4, the recommendation is whenever an amendment to the zoning map proposes that the zoning classification of a parcel of land be changed, the initiators of such amendment at least three weeks prior to the public hearing shall submit to the planning board an accurate map identifying the extent of the proposed change.
To the planning director.
Shall submit to the planning director, sorry, an accurate map identifying the extent of proposed change. That's, that's what the board is all in agreement on?
Yes.
Okay. Clear? Okay. Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Well, the, the vote the board will take this evening is to recommend this to town meeting. The vote on whether to make, to accept this amendment or not is on the town meeting floor on October 17th.
Because that's a process of notification, and I don't want to reason about the processes of notification.
Okay. I, I think given the, that that is an owner's requirement, and also is inflexible, because we heard comments that the venue got changed and we have, because you have to put these in advance, you have no ability to change those once they're done. So-
So we add other forms of notification like we mentioned earlier.
Can you come up to the microphone so the people can actually? Thank you.
Hi, yes, I, I don't think it's wise that we, we strike any form of notification that we currently have until we amend other forms of, of communications, notifiers, like we said with email and everything, because we don't want to go backwards and lose less, I mean, get less notification. I think we should leave what we have until we can add the other items. The way, the way everybody's feeling right now about notification, if you start taking away stuff, because we don't know what the timeframe will be, could be a year.
If it's voted down, it could be two years.
Pardon?
If it's voted down, it could be two years.
Right. So.
If you're inclined to keep this two-foot square signed notification on each property, I would request for whomever is in this job next, maybe eight and a half by 11, would be much easier if it needs to be changed, or you can go out and post it as standard size rather than two foot by two foot, which is obscure. Even the printing company had a hard time getting the things laminated, so.
Oh, if you did standard architectural size, A, B, C, D or C, D.
We don't have the ability to do larger size.
But just to keep in mind, the language, as it states today, currently says mailing to all property owners of latest tax record and abutters, abutting communities. So there is still already the mailing that's going out to all of those folks.
Is that the truth? Because nobody ever received any mailings.
Right, the, we're clarif, the intent of this is to clarify this, and then I think it was the, the interpretation on that last sentence that, that created the, the confusion. So the intent is to mail out to people who, who, any, any property owners whose property is affected by proposed zoning. I think that's, clearly, everybody heard that, and that, so that is definitely the intent going forward.
I don't know if this is the proper venue for questioning, I believe it's 3.3?
3.3?
On, on how they're supposed to maintain and notify, you know, all zoning changes on the, on the, on the maps? Yeah, the zoning map, I'll read it if you, the zoning map may have, may be amended from time to time by vote of the town meeting in the same manner as the zoning bylaw and such amendments. Adding, deleting, or modifying district lines and designations or dimensions of districts shall be made on the zoning map as soon as possible upon the approval of the amendments by the eternal general, together with a notation on the map, signed by the town clerk, and indicating the date of the town meeting, vote, the number of the warrant article, and in a brief substance of the, of the amendment. But the failure to show an amendment on the map shall not affect its validity. I wanted to check some of these zonings that have gone, and I couldn't get any help from the town. I couldn't get any help. I, they said, oh, do you know what year it took place? Well, no, I mean, you're supposed to know, it's supposed to be on the map when some, when a zoning change took place. And all I can see is somebody drawing in a color, and now they're calling it commercial. I, I-
If you can imagine what the map looked like before Beth got here, I think you'd be shocked. So am I surprised? No. Are people doing the best they can? I'm sure they are.
Well, you know, it's just a little, little irritating to, to some homeowners who, before they moved to this lovely town, they were looking at some property. They, of course, do their due diligence.
Yeah.
They'll find out who their neighbors are. Well, we go find out, the property, me for instance, across the street is owned by Wheaton.
Right.
And it's R40. Great, I'll buy the house. And my neighbor moves in eight years later, of course, he does the same thing. And I was, oh, great, it's R40. I go to the website today, it's R40, according to the assessor. So.
So it's only, so zoning's only changed through the process of an amendment to the bylaw and only through a two-thirds vote of town meeting. Is that, that's the only way you can change a zoning designation.
Okay.
So there's no, nothing snuck in, you know what I mean?
No, I mean, but still, can you see if somebody today wanted to buy a property on Reservoir Street and did the same thing I did? Went to the assessor's office, and then come to find out the next day, oh, they're putting in a 7-Eleven in front of you. How can they do that? It's R40. No, no, it's commercial.
No, it's not commercial, it hasn't been changed. The point of the amendment to town meeting was to change it to that use.
To village commercial.
The village commercial.
The village commercial.
Yes, but if you look upstairs, it's been changed to commercial.
So as I indicated to you previously, the assessor's records do not have accurate information on them.
Well, who, what, records do, where?
To get accurate zoning information, you need to confirm with the building commissioner.
I have, I put in a request over a month and a half ago. I have not heard anything back from them. I've officially written one.
We had a building commissioner leave, and now we have a new one. So, you know, whether that request was taken and acted upon, or who knows where it is, I don't know. But we did discuss this, that the assessor's information is not up to date.
Well, the state maps still show it as R40. Your maps show it as R40, and your PDF files of the property still show it as R40. How many places can I can go to? I haven't found anything that says, that tells me it is commercial. Where's the proof?
Of course, there was some R40 in there that we were changing, so.
I mean, where do I go to find the proof?
Building inspector.
I've been there.
And as I mentioned to you, you need to read through the annual reports and find-
I read every single town meeting from 2016 to 1997, every single town meeting. I spent 10 hours here at town hall. I found no mention of parcel 16, I mean, map 16, parcel 93, whatever it is, ever being changed. So I, I-
I'm not sure what to tell you.
I want to know when it was changed.
It was before I-
As in a butter, I was never notified.
I've been on the board for 18 years, and it hasn't been changed in that time.
So why does it show as, as commercial on the map upstairs?
Because we have a hand-colored map.
Right.
Okay. I just want to-
Anyway, so.
Want that on record.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so as the board now, we need to vote to, sorry, you have other comment on this, on this issue? Just please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm John Shay, 25 Reservoir Street. I'm just reading the bylaws on my phone, so I apologize if I look like I'm looking away from you. First and foremost, thank you. I don't envy any of your seats, some of your looks, some of your positions. That last meeting was atrocious for a lot of you. I think you all do your best, honestly, and it's never an easy position to begin with. We sit here, read, listen, figure things out, you have to answer questions on the fly. So to go back and forth, I honestly mean this to all you, thank you. I think you have your best interest in town, in heart for the town and stuff like that. Going back to that last meeting, we had a confusion, more or less. You explained the last sentence, general notice will serve where the proposed amendment is universal or wide application to the town, which was the albatross of the whole thing, correct? Okay. If we leave that, this is me thinking together, okay? If we leave that like that, is that going to cause problems again down the road? Or where becomes, where becomes the definition? Now, I mean this in the utmost respect. I, I forget, Beth?
Yes.
I'm not picking on you, I'm literally trying to help with you. She read it one way, I read it another way. 300 people read it 299 different ways. So if you look at that sentence and you leave it there like that, if I drop that tomorrow, I apologize, but 10 years down the road, you may have it again. Some guy posted a notice 29 years ago, the planning board was doing something. I didn't laugh at you, I laughed at the notice that, you know, history's repeating itself. We still can't get out of our own way, all of us. So my question would be to you, I mean, do you want to leave that sentence that broad?
The problem is, we have things that are that broad. For example, we have sign bylaws.
Yeah.
We have lighting bylaws, we have bylaws that reference a wetland protection zone.
Okay.
So those are not specific to any one prop, a property owner.
Gotcha.
They're broad-based for the town. So we need, we have to have language like that in there for those types of-
What if you put an IE? Can you put, I, there's a total pure question, can you put IE and then the examples that should prompt a widespread situation? I mean, because if, if I just take, let's, this, let's say, is it Leonard Street the big one? Just let's say Leonard Street never happened. So would Mansfield or Reservoir Street be considered a town situation or not? I mean-
I think, I, I think the issue is a change in zoning of someone's property that triggered it.
Sure.
We have like use changes, what can be allowed, like, we may have a general bylaw that what's allowed in a industrial district, we may take something in our debt or something, may or may not be allowed in industrial district.
Yeah.
So those are general, they don't specifically apply to any one property.
Yeah.
So it's, what I'm hearing is, it's when the zoning change applies to a specific property, that, that's, that's the trigger of the notice? That's, that's what I'm hearing people's concerns about.
Is it possible to modify that sentence to say, if not, I don't know how to explain it, but if not concerning a, if not concerning a zone change to a property or something to that effect?
If the zoning amendment-
I have to be honest, I completely, as I'm reading this, agree that I would, if I'm a planner in this town, still think that that applies to a zone change to a piece of property.
Does not apply to a zoning change for specific parcels? So if we said if the zone, so if we have that last sentence, general notice will serve where the proposed amendment is of universal or wide application to town, if the zoning amendment does not apply to a zoning change for, for specific parcels?
I mean, that may-
Because, you know, the planners, you're, you're faced with vague language and you interpret it, so.
Something in that ballpark may be helpful, if that would be beneficial going forward, I think.
Right.
Is town council going to look at it before?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I wouldn't trust the town council to that extent.
Right, so we want to clarify that.
Okay.
For zoning amendments that change the zoning of specific properties, parcels, parcel of properties, those need to be notified, it's not a general notice.
Okay. All right, good. If I may? I don't have to reintroduce myself, do I?
No.
Five hundred dollars is your budget.
Right.
Can I ask the last time you got a raise?
Oh, we don't get, we don't get paid.
Budget. When's the last time the budget got adjusted?
I don't know.
That long. What I would, what I would recommend, I watched Mr. Yunus talk the other night about a lot of givebacks within the town, insurance, overtime, other things. He would be much more exact on that. I don't want to quote him. A misquote might be wrong. But he was on the selectmen's meeting talking about how free cash and a lot of the returns came back. How would you go about, do you need a motion? Do you need something from the townspeople? Or does it come from you? Or where does it come from?
The budget is voted at town meeting. The finance committee would recommend, does a recommendations, various recommendations. But if we, the board gets another thousand dollars, somebody else is less a thousand dollars, so...
No, I get that. I get that.
The department has, are asked by a certain deadline to submit the department needs for the budget.
Okay.
And they're asked to submit one that's funded similar to the previous year.
Yeah.
So, we put that in, and then they look at the budget as a whole and determine whether we can increase or decrease, and go from there.
But the budget's decided through the finance committee, and it's voted on in town meeting. So, no way to get, either the finance committee changes it, or someone at town meeting proposes it. But then if they do, then if they have to balance the budget, then the money has to come from someplace else. So, that's all the process.
I'll be there for you. Because I think, I think for five hundred dollars, I get half the problem where you're saying it's hard to post the signs, to mail it out, to register. And if you're going to take the three hundred feet, which I think many of us are grateful to, for all the not on here and at the last meeting, to go and spend that money, you're going to run out quicker, even just with regular mail. You're going to run, yeah, you have, so you're going to need more money, so...
And we can't have to wait till next fiscal year to buy anything, so...
All right. Okay, good enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, just getting back to our recommendation is to recommend Article sixteen to town meeting as we've amended it this evening, subject to town council's review.
The two-by-two square, are we going to keep that in? Are we going to make an adjustment on that?
I, I would recommend that we not keep that in, and that if somebody at town meeting wants to put it back in, you know, they can certainly amend it at that. And there'll be obviously a discussion in town meeting. But I think...
Agreed.
I think we've, you know, I think by mailing to all property owners and abutters for everything other than a general, anything that applies to any partial changes, I think we're going above and beyond what Chapter forty-eight requires, so...
Perfect.
I think I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So, do I have a motion then?
Motion to recommend to town meeting with the specified changes. Second.
Motion in a second? Okay. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jurzick?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Okay. I will also vote yes. So, town meeting is the seventeenth, starting at seven p.m. Getting back to our regular agenda, our next item is Clap Street Solar thirty percent discount on energy bill. Is anybody from the... Okay. Since I have a few in mind given, a summary of what's being proposed here. We do have information in our packet.
I received an email on September twenty-eighth from Brett Chapman, who's with Maximum Solar, in regards to the proposed thirty percent discount off of the specified property owner's electric bill, as stipulated in the decision for the Wheaton Solar Clap Street project. Just going to read the email. It's easier than me trying to explain it. Sure. Sorry. Yep. It says, "Hello, all abutters. For those of you that are interested in receiving a thirty percent discount off their electric bill, we will need a copy of your most recent national grid electric bill. The plan was to have the entire bill credited and then the bill, sorry, and then the bill you for seventy percent of it, thereby giving you a thirty percent discount. But that would involve legal agreements, billings, and collections. So, we have a better plan that requires none of that and will be simple for all. One, we receive your bill that will indicate what you consumed in electricity over the last twelve months and what your total annual costs were. Two, once the project is up and running, you will be then credited that amount each year, spread out evenly over the twelve months. Three, we do this by simply filling out what National Grid calls Schedule Z. We fill in the account numbers of the abutters and how much they will get for a credit for each month. The rest of the credits we receive will go to Wheaton College." This was sent to all the abutting property owners via email, and kind of explains the process that they are looking to implement. I forwarded this information to town council to review, and town council emailed back that they thought, as long as there was a baseline that was new every year, because there's variables that can change in electric bill, and it's not, I guess, fair to say that if you're given a baseline from 2016, that in 2020, that baseline is going to be the same. So, I forwarded that information along to Brett, or their attorney, who responded that it was difficult to try to, or nearly impossible to do a baseline each year, that they wanted to use the original baseline.
For the extent, for the entire...
Extended the life of the project.
Right.
So, 2016, it could change in, you know, 2050, and they're still using the 2016 baseline because it's complicated to try to do the paperwork every year. Town council's response was to see, to pass along to you, to put on the agenda, to discuss whether they are in compliance with the decision, or, you know, whether you should say, sorry, you need to stick with the original intent. And I did include a copy of the decision with you, and the condition is number...
No.
We talked about it earlier.
Number eight, on page nine of the decision. That condition indicates that the applicant offered to provide property owners listed on Exhibit B with a thirty percent reduction in their electricity rate, which shall begin, which shall begin, the facility begins producing energy. As a result, it shall be a condition of any relief granted under that a thirty percent reduction shall be available to owners of the ten impacted properties unless and until the solar facility is discontinued, disconnected from the utility power. Provide a Schedule Z form is, provided that a Schedule Z form is submitted by the relevant owner. So, the question is, do you consider the proposal by the solar company to be in compliance with Condition eight? Or do you consider Condition eight to be what should happen?
I think they, I think they agreed upon Condition eight, and that's the way it should go.
Right. So, that if they're going to do a baseline, they need to do one every year because over the years, the value of the thirty percent will go down, and ten years out, people won't be getting thirty percent anymore. They just have a fixed dollar amount.
Okay.
Well, as I, as I read that section eight, it's saying a thirty percent, thirty percent reduction in their electricity rate. That's the cost per KWH. That's the rate. And not, not total consumption, not what you consumed, what your total bill was, but in the rate itself. So, if you're paying ten cents per kilowatt hour, they're saying a reduction in the electricity rate, which would make it, now you pay seven cents per kilowatt hour. So, really, does, how much you spend, or how many kilowatt hours you consume is really immaterial, because this says that it's off of the electricity rate. So, what the, what they're proposing is not off of the rate. They're just saying a thirty percent off of your total bill. So, just, I mean, it's a bit semantics, but there is a difference there with how it's worded. It doesn't specify if that's calculated in one year or every year thereafter, unless I missed that in here.
I think the intent was that it was...
It was every year.
It was every year.
Yeah.
It wasn't a one-time offer. It was...
Right. But again, off of...
There was discussions about it running with the property.
Yeah. And again, off of the electricity rate, not off of the consumption, not off of your total bill amount, but off of the rate itself.
Yeah. I think the rate was intended to be the bill, I think. But in any case, just doing a baseline once in 2016, and that's your discount for the...
For the life?
For the foreseeable future, is, does not appear to me to apply with the intent of Condition eight.
It's not in the spirit of what it was discussed.
Correct. I would, I would agree with that.
Agreed.
So, if the board could just make a recommendation that the solar company proceed with Condition eight, I would appreciate that, so I can forward that along.
Make a recommendation that they proceed with Condition eight and update on a yearly basis? Yes. Not at all. Come on up.
So, Janice Heaton. I live at fourteen Clap Street. I received that email from him. I received an additional email that actually said to me that he would do it year to year, and then he said to you that he wouldn't. I'm already, I'm already having, as a homeowner, issues with this particular person emailing me and changing what he says already back and forth.
So, the initial email was from Brett. However, I did correspond with your attorney, who indicated they can't do that.
Right. Okay. And I also indicated to Brett as well that we have tenants. My neighbor, Mrs. Wicker, also has tenants. There are times if those, if those homes aren't vacant, that the energy use is going to go down. So, to take a baseline, and like you said, it is the rate, not thirty percent off of what I used in 2016 to be applied over twenty years. If I wanted tomorrow to change everything in my house to electric to get thirty percent off, then it's going to be more than it was, was last year. And I just think, as someone who's going to have to live next to this for twenty years, he needs to be held to the letter of that agreement. Because if you give him any leeway right now, he's going to do it again. He actually, instead of planting trees, wants to put a screen up next to my house. So, I think as a planning board, I'm asking you, I know some of you, there are new faces here, you have to hold him to this agreement, or he will walk all over us for the next twenty years.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we're taking the issue off of the thirty percent discount. So, I think the, the recommendation is the, keeps, keeps up with the agreement of Condition eight. Do we need to take a vote on that, or...
It would be helpful.
Okay. So, we have a, do we have a motion? And then we have a second on that?
Second motion.
Okay. I'll take a vote then. Mr. Jurzick?
Yes.
Sorry. I get it, a system. Mr. Durant? Mr. Jurzick?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I will also vote yes. Second issue with...
At next meeting, I'm sitting in your chair.
So, you'll notice that there is a letter in the side pocket of your notebooks. It is, I received it today via certified mail. One of the conditions requires that once the landscaping is complete, that the project developer notify the planning board and property owners. And within ten days, if there's any observation that the plantings are incomplete, then the planning board needs to indicate to the developer that they wish to have a hearing and then notify the abutters. So, this came today. So, within ten day, business days, any comments that come back, if the planning board has gone over to the site to take a look. We have received some comments from, I believe, two abutters, indicating that they're not satisfied with the plantings, because they believe that they can still see the panels or the frames right now. The panels are not up. I walked the property with the contractor, with Brett, as well as the landscaper. To me, this is my opinion, the plantings look as though they've been installed according to the plan. There were a few that were not planted in one area because there was significant foliage and trees there already. So, to plant them would remove vegetation that was providing screening, simply to add more trees. So, they provided those trees, moved them to another location that was a little bit more barren, which made sense, working with one of the property owners to place them. And that property owner was happy with the results. The trees that were planted are bigger and more full than what was provided. There were some recommendations for abrevites, and instead, they planted larger pine trees, which provided more staggered screening and more full, fuller than what an abrevite would have provided. The trees were eight, ten, fifteen feet tall, very nice plantings, which will grow significantly in the next year. And as indicated in the decision, there's ten-year planting guarantee, so anything that is, you know, brown or dead within a year, they need to replant up to ten years.
Were the abutters notified? They have ten days now?
Yes, they all received this letter as well, via certified mail and via email.
Okay.
Yes. The two people that have responded, after discussions with Brett today, he would like to place a slatted chain link fence rather than the planning board, which approved just a plain black chain link fenced. He would like to add in. I know this is hard to see. It's not in color. Obviously, it looks like just a big black blob on a piece of paper. But it is proposed to put up a solid slatted fence. The white ties will be painted black, so they're more invisible to pass that around.
So, this is on the fence abutting?
Is that a screen?
Yeah. No. Is it slats?
No, I was going to say, you wouldn't need, you wouldn't need ties with the slats, so, yeah.
It's a, it's a, like a fabric that would cover these areas.
To provide additional screenage for the people that have indicated they can still see. One of the things Brett has asked is to have some consideration that the panels are not up yet, and that he would like to see the panels up, and then work and provide the screening if the planning board's okay with it, to further walk the site with the abutters that have concerns and see if this alleviates the problem.
Why black? Why not green?
Because black, black goes, it goes into shadow, and it's actually puts, it's less visible, it's less noticeable as a difference in the landscape. It looks like a shadow, so that it, it's not like, doesn't stand out as something different.
Okay.
So, a black chain link fence is the least visible as the black screen.
Does it guarantee the fabric for the life of the project?
Certainly something I'm sure you can discuss.
I have a colored photograph of that if you'd like to see it.
Right. So, I think the intent was to let the, the trees are going to grow somewhere, over what they have now.
Yeah.
Thank you. Instead of putting further trees, and of keeping my, the fence is only seven or eight feet tall, but these racks are twelve feet tall, I have additional pictures of the racks glaringly.
You're going to have to, you have to...
I'm sorry. I was giving, I have to, to look at the picture.
But this is to replace?
No, no, no.
It's not a replacement of trees?
No.
It's just where, there is a fence now, right?
Instead of putting...
Excuse me. Can we let Beth finish?
Sure. Well, sure.
So, the trees that were approved on the plan were put in, except for one location that there was already forest, which didn't make sense to remove forest to put in trees. This screening and the request to add the panels before the planning board requires more plantings, which they're not opposed to, but they've just been asked if you could see if this works and solves the problem. and solves the problem, and then if needed, they will work with the planning board and the abutters to provide the screening that's necessary.
So is the fence there now? The fence is up now, or nothing up now?
Chain link fences is supposed to be installed next week. So the request was, is the planning board see this as a possible addition for screening?
So the, the trees, there's deciduous trees there now? And the ones that were supposedly planted, were they pine trees, or were they deciduous trees as well?
It was a mix.
It was a mix?
There was only five of them.
So it, it would make sense to me that deciduous trees drop their leaves, and you'll at least have, if you have a mix, at least you'll have some natural screening versus.
There's a mix there right now with the natural screening, yeah.
There's a mix right now, so there's pines in?
It's actually quite dense.
This is just one photograph in my backyard. You can see the panels, and as the leaves are falling, we're seeing more and more due to the length of our yard. So what will happen is if you do put the screen, it's just one picture, there's like tons of it in there.
Where, where are the panels?
Do you see where the glare is? It's hard, I mean, I can see it, it's my yard, I'm used to looking at it every day.
Up here? This looks like the sky.
No, those are panels.
The panels aren't up yet.
No, I'm sorry, they're not the panels, they're the racks.
Frames.
The back of the frames.
Of the solar panel frames.
Right, but they're, they're facing my house, the panels are going to face away from my house. So those racks are always going to be facing. There isn't going to be panels, they may be shaded, but I was under the understanding that from the first floor of my house, I wasn't.
Sorry. Otherwise, you go.
From, I, I'm sorry.
Get it on tapes.
From the first floor of my house, I wasn't going to see it. I can, that's, I have pictures right from my kitchen window, I can see the entire length of my backyard. And I just, and I actually suggested to Brett that do what he did on the other side of Clap Street with the berm and the trees. I do not want a black mesh fence. I, there are seven-foot trees out there now.
How far away though? The fence is way down at the bottom, though, where the.
That is right, those panels, I could throw a rock from my backyard to those panels. And that's why I asked if they would come to my property. He was there today.
That's, that's the first array, I think, on the left.
And this is just the beginning of the leaves starting to fall from the trees. This is just going to increase and increase.
This is the right.
So this is all woods here.
And these are just crummy pictures from my iPad.
Well.
Thank you.
So the issue, the, okay, so the issue is, to me, a screen on the fence sounds like a reasonable approach to, to further adding additional screening to it, with the, with the caveat that we're still open to a review of the landscaping after this.
Well, the fence is only about eight feet high, these racks are 12 feet high. So why not just go and put the trees up?
Well, he's put up all the trees that, that were approved.
Correct. Well, and it was my understanding, the addition, that additional trees, and he texted me and said he had 15 additional trees that he could put up.
Which were moved to another abutter who asked for screening.
Okay, so.
Any room to plant?
No, not really.
Where, where, I.
Now, were those 15 trees placed where the panels are going to be facing?
The 15 trees were placed. Along this property owner's.
On the second array?
Yeah.
On the second array.
Yeah.
The second array is almost, is virtually invisible from the street. This array is not invisible from our street.
From my house or the street?
From my house or the street, and so from the street, also from my neighbor's house across the street. So I'm here, so if I can see it from the street, my neighbor can see it from their picture window, because they're across the street, looking into it. I'm on the side of it.
This is where.
And I think when they walked the property, they walked it from Wheaton, from the Wheaton property, which is depressed, our house is elevated, our property's elevated. So they're looking up, so it doesn't look as bad from the other side. When you're on my side, you're looking straight into it.
So there's a, so there's plantings all on the road access?
Yes. There's three photos, if you swipe to the right, otherwise you get to see my trip to Vermont.
A lot of it does look nice. But I'm concerned about the, my length of my backyard.
I don't blame you.
And of, like I said, eight feet of black screen doesn't count, cover 12 feet of rack.
Well. I think the screen adds, a degree of screen, that's probably worth trying.
But, but what about above it? I mean, that's the thing, what's the point of putting screening here, when I'm still going to see this? My house is elevated, I'm looking right down into it.
Well, I think, I think the idea is that the screening would be provided, as long as he understands that if it's not acceptable, we still can see.
Right.
He's got to go back and plant, so.
It, it's a tiered approach to solving the problem, if you're looking at it that way?
Because I think to a screen like that with the wind, I don't think that's very sturdy.
No idea how they do that stuff.
It's going to be tied on, because he said to me they were going to spray paint the ties white, the white tie is black.
Yeah, I mean, and my concern is, the screen's a nice addition. But, you know, the worst thing you could do is put a screen up, and then the wind.
Then have it tear open.
And have it tear open, and then it becomes, no, no, no screen.
A guarantee on the screen?
Yeah, definitely.
How many years?
For the length of the project.
Length of the project, okay.
I don't think that's unrealistic.
How tall are the trees that they're going to put in?
They were eight to 10 feet, or in, in, sorry.
Eight to 10 or higher?
But the panels, the panels are 12 feet high.
Right.
What was required on the approval was, I believe, an eight to 10-foot tree, which are to grow in addition several feet.
Is there room to put trees in that?
Not really.
Not really.
There really isn't room, but on, but honestly, that's not my problem. The, it was, I'm not supposed to see it from my house, and from the first floor of my house.
Pine trees go pretty fast, so.
But it was from the day, we weren't supposed to see it. We knew they were going to grow, but it was, you wouldn't see it. You wouldn't see it, it wasn't, you won't see it in five years when the trees grow.
I mean, if there's no place to plant a tree, though, that's.
Well.
What about abrevites, like you were saying before?
Well, our, our abrevite don't grow as tall as pine, and our abrevite get eaten by deer.
They were considered, they have a significant.
And I've already seen deer eating the our abrevites at the other end of the street. The deer are there every night, when I come home from work, they're devouring.
Same problem, my yard, I have.
Yeah, a white, a white pine.
A white pine grows fast, it's native, grows well, and it grows very fast.
And I think the other thing you have to keep in mind is, if I cut down any, like, poison ivy or any of that in my yard, now that's low scrub right now that is still visible, that will be gone. So I'm also in a position where I can't thin out some of the overgrowth in my own property.
And then, then the screen would help on the low stuff, looking down.
That would help out, but I, I, I just think that if the, um, screen is only seven or eight feet, and these racks are 12, I'm going to see the top of the racks.
Would you mind if we stop by to take a look?
You can absolutely come over anytime you want, and I've asked, and he was going to come over tomorrow, and then sent me this, saying I'd rather put up 300 feet of.
Well, no, what he indicated was that he wanted to.
Do that first, correct.
The planning board recommended and is not opposed to additional screening, but is requesting the planning board, look at this, give the trees a year to grow another few feet, and see if there's a need for more plantings.
Honestly, it was supposed to be, I can't see it from the first floor from the beginning. The trees should have been planted tall enough that I can't see it. And I'm, you know, I know I'm being adamant about this, but I have a solar, industrial solar facility now next to my house. And he has to be held accountable and responsible to uphold that contract that he has with us.
So I, I hear what you're saying. I think a tiered approach to solving the problem makes sense to me, I think the screen does make sense. I think that then also, then once that's in, I think the board members can come take a look at things on your property and see if things.
My concern with that, that screen going up is he's going to give us a song and dance that I can't see it, and it's, and it's, I think it's unacceptable.
He still has to get, go through the, all the special permit requirements here.
Before.
Before he, oh, turns, flips the switch on the thing, so.
Right.
So there is a, a little.
Okay, well, I just would like it on the record that I'm pretty, I'm opposed to that type of screening, I just think it's.
How far away is he from turning the switch on, or from requesting?
The panels aren't even done.
Can't turn, he can't begin energy production until the planning board indicates that everything has been recorded.
So how far away is he from that?
It's a while, yeah, because the panels aren't even on. There's no panels up yet.
I know, but did he give you an indication of how far away?
My understanding is that there's changes in regulations, and they need to have it done ASAP.
So he's moving as fast.
He's moving as fast, yeah.
Absolutely.
You know, one month, two months?
I've just been watching the one on Hill Street.
Don't feel comfortable answering that question, because if I say one month and it's two, then we'll.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I don't know, as far as my conversations with them is, they want it done yesterday, so.
Can he, I mean, is it reasonable, can he wait until Monday or something to hear from us about it?
I told him to wait until he hears from, from you guys tomorrow.
So, I, I, I don't think a screen, it just adds another layer into the whole mix, which still have the issue of the tree to resolve.
I can certainly indicate that planning board members would like to go out and view the site before indicating yes or no, but.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And right now, like, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, it all, it, it's not blinding, but it's all reflecting right into the house. So my point isn't necessarily the glare, because once it's appropriately, appropriately screened, I'm not going to see the glare, it's just visibility. And we were assured there would be no visibility, um, you know.
Yeah, that was part of the agreement.
That was the agreement, and.
And that's why we got the.
I have to be a good sport and live with that next to my house for 20 years, then I would, I would appreciate it to be nicer screening. The way he did at the other end of the street, it looks like a Christmas tree farm. I want to look at a Christmas tree farm, not some weird, black screen.
And, and what is your address again, please?
14 Clap Street, I'm there all the time, and if I'm not, just don't trip.
It's the red house on the left, the first house on the left.
So, just to clarify, though, the board, what, my recommendation was that we add the screen into this process, and then we take, come and take a look at it after it's installed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
One more there.
Okay, we have another?
Yeah.
Come to the, uh. Pauline?
Dean Swicker, 9 Clap and 15 Clap. Did you see all the registered letters have been sent out?
Yes.
I did not receive one for 15.
Okay.
I received one for nine. At this point, I can't see anything from nine, but when, if the leaves fall off the trees, I'm sure I will. But from 15, I would, I, like any of you folks, come out and look. From 15, you can clearly see over to the old Bowser home that was taken down. You can see all the panel framework.
Were you in relation?
Across the street.
Across the street from Janice, either way.
Before the funeral home?
Just before the funeral, the small ranch just before the funeral home is where the problem is.
Yeah.
And to clarify, I don't believe there's any white pine that they installed. It's spruce and cedar and abrevite, I don't believe.
Existing, but there is not, no, they didn't.
They didn't install that, that was there, that's a pine right there.
I just wanted to clarify that, because white pine grows very quickly.
Right.
But I invite any of the panel to stop by, I'm not, I rent out 15, but you've got the permission to walk there, you won't have to go too far, just go into the driveway, you'll see all the panel framework. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, um, it sounds like the board members can go take a look.
Yeah.
If you want to just email me by beginning of next week, so I, or call me, let me know your opinions on it?
Sure.
That'd be great.
All right, that's it for the standard item? Oh, we have, uh, we have one other request, what's this, do you have that written?
Unfortunately, I do not have that email, but he's going to email me.
Sure, I did receive one additional request while I was on the site, in order to expedite the process and get it, get out of the neck of the woods. If they could have one day of Saturday work hours with no heavy equipment, it would simply be installing panels. And they understand if you do approve that, then, um, they would be, you know, requests that you indicate what hours on a Saturday would work.
Yeah.
I work every Friday night, sometimes I don't get home till 3 o'clock in the morning, I do not want to hear them on Saturday, and that is in, I don't care if they need to be finished.
So, so board's opinion on this?
My opinion is he agreed upon what's in the finding, and that's what he should stick to.
Okay.
What's his reasoning for asking for Saturday? Just to move it along? But one Saturday, he was asking?
One Saturday.
He's already worked on a Saturday where he notified us, and then we notified the town planner.
Which he was told not to.
Yeah, he was told not to do it again, but he has done it, so.
Through the planning board, because I asked him if he was going to.
Work again.
Work again, he needs to tell the planning board, and the planning board needs to make that decision. So that's why I'm requesting it.
Motion to die.
I'm hearing, we should stick with the orders.
Stick with the schedule, if he has to add a Monday on after a Friday, then he has to add a Monday on after a Friday.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, that it for the agenda item?
Yep.
Okay, next on our agenda is 85 East Main Street, which is the doctor's office. Are you representing the applicant?
Yeah, do you want me up there?
Just state your name for the record, please, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Good evening, Todd Pilling from Pilling Engineering. Uh, I think I see some new faces here from when we did this originally. The site plan was for the doctor's office where the Legion used to be. Almost all the work has been completed, with the exception of the walkway. As you see in the, in gray on this plan here, the one that I think you all have a small version of, that was where we originally showed the walkway on the plan. It was to go from the street to, along the side of the parking spaces, and get people off the street into our building, and also to the building next door. The current owner of this medical office building also owns that little building next door. And when he bought it, there was originally agreements that they would be using each other's property kind of thing. But what's happening now is, the doctor was in the old building, he's moving into the new building, and he's most likely going to be selling the first, the, the original building, without all the limitations and exceptions on it. So at this point, he doesn't necessarily need the walkway to connect the two buildings together. I know the, the walkway out to the street was on the presumption that sidewalk is coming down, Route 123 at some point, and I don't know when, I'm not saying it's not coming, I just don't know when, but that was why it went out to the street. So at this point, we had submitted a letter asking that if we could relocate the walkway to the other side, where I got it shown and read on the sketch, which is a little bit flatter. It's, it's not any shorter, significantly shorter, it's just a flatter, probably a better location for bringing pedestrians in. You know, we'd rather not put in any walkway, because we just don't see the need for the pedestrians to be using it, but if the board wishes, we'd rather be at the red location than at the gray location. It's a little bit easier for handicap access, and I think it makes it a little bit better for people trying to walk in, they don't necessarily have to walk across traveled ways to get there, they can just kind of come right in and get right onto the existing sidewalk around the building, so.
Can you show us on the map where the speed bumps are for the?
Where the what are?
The speed bumps are on the property?
Uh, yeah, the speed bumps are not shown on this plan, but there's one right here.
Okay.
Another one right here.
Okay.
They go down the side of the building, because it dips down and then comes back up, and we want cars slowing down where it's the entrance way to the existing office.
Okay.
So. If, now, the, the other buildings for sale will be severed from this property? It's, it's separate property now, eh?
It's a separate, it's always been a separate property, there were easements for parking and such. It depends who buys it, whether or not they need it, I, I'm anticipating the use of the building's not going to need all the additional parking that was needed there before. Because I, I think the doctor's business took off when he, when he got there, and all of a sudden he needed more and more parking. And, um, you know, obviously, that was a good thing, and that's why he's building this building, but I don't anticipate that all the, the needs, because the original easement went all the way to the back of the property, it was like 40 parking spaces that they, they had an easement for, so. I don't believe that's going to be anticipated at this point.
Well, I'm not opposed to relocating the sidewalk to the other side. It, in some ways, it's better, because anybody coming in here doesn't have to cross the. It, in some ways, it's better, because anybody coming in here doesn't have to cross the parking lot as part of it. It's a clear shot from the street into the building without crossing any parking area, so.
But they're crossing right near the speed bumps. The, the problem I have with this is, you made the, it was agreed upon that this is what was going to be built. And so, because that was what needed to get done to get this passed. And, you know, now we're getting changes, instead of going with what is agreed upon, I mean, are you, is he, are you in the building, the new building?
Yes.
Oh, Dr. Actor for the record.
Well, I mean.
To me, if you're trying to sell that other building, and the sidewalk comes in, whether it's next year, two years from now, five years from now, it's actually a good selling point for the, for that building, because now you have a walkway going to that building.
Yeah, but right, okay, good.
And so, I think you should do what you agreed upon, and coming, coming back on a regular basis, which happens all the time.
Right, well, I mean.
And, and I don't think it's unreasonable for us to start holding these people to what they agree upon. They get, they get a pass, they build a building, and then they want to make changes. We've got the same thing going on down with the self-storage building, and, you know, now we have a new owner.
Well.
I, I think part of the problem with this town is that people don't, aren't held accountable for what they agree upon when they come in front of us, or from anybody. And that's a problem, because, I mean, it, it, it's ridiculous. You agree upon something, you build it the way it's supposed to be built, you get your occupancy permit, you walk in the door. Sounds, sounds easy, and I don't know what goes on in other towns.
Well.
But it happens on a regular basis here, where we have people coming in for modifications on a regular basis, after they agree upon something, and I think it's, it's ridiculous.
Well.
Is eighty-seven listed for sale?
I don't believe it's for sale yet.
Well, I, I, I think we, having worked, working for a engineering company, there are, as things move forward, there's some changes that sometimes come, site conditions, some conditions change along the way. The intent here with the sidewalk was to create a path from the street sidewalk into the building. I think the modification still accomplishes the intent of what the requested sidewalk was for. The fact that the building is no longer being used and will be sold, I think, isn't, you know, a change of condition. So I'm not, I personally am not, I know, I hear what you're saying, but I, I'm, I'm not opposed to this change. If they didn't put a sidewalk in, I'd be more concerned, but a relocation to another location that still serves the same purpose, I think, you know, I would be okay with that one.
Do we do something like, agree to the change, but if eighty-seven's not moved within a year, they comply with the original condition?
Well, is eighty-seven being used, the point was eighty-seven was being used for, by, by the facility, you know, so there would be a need for people to walk across.
No, the, just for eighty-seven, um, right now, they, they walk down the driveway and up the walkway into the stairs, because it's always on the other side of the building, so that's part of the reason why this, the, the, the two don't necessarily work together, so.
The door is in the back of the building?
No, it's on the side.
On the side, that little, oh, I see, okay. Where the deck is?
There's a walk up way to the deck, so right now they can walk in and, and up.
On, on the driveway, they walk in on the driveway.
Currently, but again, there's no sidewalk currently, so that's, that would be currently how they can get in for it, so.
So if you wanted to. You'll have, you'll have to speak at the microphone, because it doesn't pick up the tape.
I'm Dr. Actor, and I'm the owner of the, both the properties. So, the old plan is showing that it will cut the, the, the grass and the landscape. It will look really ugly. If it goes through the new plan, it will look better for the, from the people driving by, like, that it will be like a sidewalk, like the town has, and the, the landscape won't be disturbed, the purpose will be solved.
So, what are you saying, if that sidewalk on the left side is not there, there's, there's landscaping in that location?
There's a landscape, yes.
There's landscaping there now?
Yeah, there's grass.
It's, it's grass?
It's grass, yeah.
Okay.
The purpose of the.
And what's in the, the new section now, that's just grass now, the red, or the proposed new?
Yeah, there is grass.
And up there is?
On the edge of it, with this trees all on the edge of the property.
In the middle of the, the, in the middle of, no, in there you have to put the concrete.
Mm-hmm, right.
You know, and then town, if makes the sidewalk, then that portion will be already have a sidewalk. You know, so it won't disturb the, the grass. You should, but I might, what I understood, going to the planning board, that the intention of the town is that we don't concrete too many places, in order to have the rain go down the, stay in the same property.
The intent was not that parking in front of the building, too.
Yeah, what's that argument?
I don't know.
As I said, I don't, I don't have a problem with this, this would be, put the sidewalk next to the edge of the property, the property next to it has trees on it.
Yeah, and that's open space of part of the, uh, the project next to us, so that would always be trees over there. It's not, it can't be developed, so.
Is there, so, right now, there's no future plans for the building?
Well, the, you're talking eighty-five, the, the new building? Well, right now, the doctor's occupying the rear half of it, the front half is, um, going to be open for rental, like, for business, yes, for commercial only.
So is the main concern that somebody's going to use the parking on the new building for eighty-seven, because the sidewalk's there?
That was part of why we had proposed it, was to, to get the people from those parking spaces into the building, but that's not the intention now.
No, but is your concern that people are going to use the parking in the new facility for eighty-seven, because it's more convenient with the sidewalk there?
If the sidewalk is there, as proposed originally.
Right, no, I, I know what you're saying, I don't think that was a concern per se, is that it wasn't necessary. It wasn't that, oh, everybody's going to park there and then walk in. If they're going to do that, they're going to walk across the grass, and obviously if that be, but then if they don't have a lease to be using those spaces, then, you know, we, we're in a, a different category.
So, at the time.
For my end, I, I don't have a problem with the, the change, given that they're selling that property, and they're no longer connected as part of that same operation, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it.
But you want a walkway.
Yeah, I have a walkway there, yeah, yeah, but I'm okay with the relocation of the walkway.
You know, maybe, um, just take off the backside of the, the walkway for eighty-seven.
So you.
The one coming in off the proposed sidewalk for the town, you come in and then take that left so that, or come straight in from the other side where the door is there, so there's an entrance way for eighty-seven for one of the buildings, so.
What he's proposing is that we did this red, that maybe we bring in the walkway here to connect, um, also, and get rid of all the gray and have the two reds?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
That'd be a good idea.
I'm fine with that.
That's a good idea.
I can't, I can't see.
Yeah, that way there's, now you've got sidewalk access for both properties, that's a great idea.
Like this, and then do away with this and this.
Right, so then each property have their own sidewalk entrance from this.
I like it.
It's simpler, it's, again, for access, it gets people on a flatter surface into both buildings.
Yeah, and you clearly define the, the separation of the properties.
And they know where the entrances are.
Right.
It's on the entrance side of the building there, yeah?
Did you say, do we know where the entrance?
No, I'm saying, and you know where the entrances are.
Yes.
It would define the entrance to the building better. I'm okay with that.
It's great.
Yes.
It's good compromise.
We have a consensus of the board? Correct.
So, so gray's gone, we'll have two reds.
Gray's gone, two reds.
Yeah, get rid of that gray, that would go to gra, it's grass now, stay as grass.
Yeah, that goes too bad.
Right. Right, so that separates them as, the two separate entities then.
And then that won't have, making people want to use the other one, and, and again, it gets pedestrians involved, so.
Everybody's going. Okay, so, do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Can you provide me with a plan that shows that?
Absolutely.
And maybe make your motion included for revisions.
Right, right, so we need to make a motion that they will, um, to allow revised sidewalk on eighty-five, uh, East Main Street, and provide a separate sidewalk for eighty-seven, um, subject to providing revised plans to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Talk about that, Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. For the record, um, the building is done, so there will be no more requests for modifications or anything, this is the only one.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, Ed.
All right, um, we do have a number of minutes to approve. Oh, sorry, sorry, before we do that, we do have, uh, New England Ice Cream here, I forgot. Sorry.
I'm, uh, Nick from Campinelli, I'm the general contractor building New England Ice Cream. We just had some tweets, the landscaping, similar conversations that I was overhearing, uh, earlier, but, um, there was a large sound wall that was established to, uh, screen the mobile trailer park from the property. Um, and they're proposing that, uh, do some significant plantings on the mobile trailer side of that, uh, I invited Beth out on, uh, Friday last week, we took a look at this, and see if we could, uh, redirect these good plantings on the property that we certainly own to establish and install in a couple more strategic areas, and, uh, kind of highlighted another, another plan here, some strategic areas. Generally down front, uh, as if a butt from one forty, uh, hands spilled out. There's also a bear spot in here that's now wood chips, which is the sewer and the storm drain connection to one forty. Uh, some tree clearing was required in that area to get those utilities connected. Uh, so now there's kind of a void, a barren spot in there that we'd like to relocate some of the trees. Uh, the trees in the most western location there on your map, so in the, in the top of the page, uh, these are in a very densely wooded area, as we, uh, saw out on site. And what the folks from New England Ice Cream are willing to do is extend the current sound wall that was just installed, ten foot tall, tongue and groove, two by eight, pressure treated, another ninety-six feet. Uh, and that would extend up on the, basically the limits of our construction zone here. It's very, it's right on the edge of, uh, the undisturbed natural forest mat that we have out there.
So this sketch does not show the extension?
It does, it's not there.
It does not show that, and it does not have the extension.
Okay.
There's a ninety-six in red.
Okay, so that was.
I have this electronically that I can send along, but I don't have.
Can you show that here, please?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so extending just out further, ninety-six feet.
Up to this bend in the contour and the.
Yes, that's the, the natural tie-in of our limits of construction up in that area. And similar species that we talked about, white pine, eight to ten feet, averitae, eight to ten feet, white spruce, eight to ten feet. That's the tree cluster that's up in that, uh, top portion. Behind the wall is just an attempt at making some form of planting attempt back there. We have rhododendrons, some cranberry bushes, some mountain laurel. Uh, but behind that, uh, sound fence, the mobile trailer park's really looking at the pressure-treated finished wood, uh, and then natural forest mat, so.
In front of them.
The invasive getting in there to do these plantings is a little bit, uh, cumbersome, a little challenging to get in there and leave things as undisturbed as possible.
So there is existing trees and plantings in that space now?
There are, yes, yes, very, uh, very dense, I mean, the leaves are changing, the leaves are ultimately going to fall off, but it's, uh, significantly wooded, um, I had pictures to share with you this evening, but.
I did, um, visit the site on Friday, uh, with Nick, and it is densely planted back there. Um, to plant the proposed or approved plantings would mean you need to remove existing fully grown mature trees to plant smaller ones.
Okay.
It really doesn't make sense, you know.
The landscape plan developed in a bubble, really, it does show the, kind of the, the clouded bubbled line, which would be the tree canopy, and, uh, things are just densely, uh, established in that, uh, in that property corner there.
So your intention is to move the plantings to the front of one forty?
Quite closer to the front, this is really quite barren down here, as we, uh.
Where the wood chip areas is.
Yes, and, and also to the, uh, to the north where the mini pub there with the waterfall and so forth. Um, with the tree clearing and the site developing in there, it does show some plantings right off the street. We're just trying to enhance that a little bit.
Yep. You know, part of the beauty of this project, when you guys came in front of us, was the fact that you had the mobile home neighbors were in total and favor, because you guys were really upfront with them, and tried to, have you spoken to them about this change?
Well, actually, there was a woman in the park, and I don't know her name specifically, but she's been approaching with some of the noise and recently, towards the end of the project, and it was because we were excavating for the pond, so we were right on top of her.
Right.
And, uh, she didn't approach the town, she approached our superintendent at the job trailer. I approached New England Ice Cream, I said, hey, we have a little situation developing here, I just want to make you a, a rest of the situation. And that's when they offered to extend that sound fence, just point plant.
Yeah.
The other stuff is more general contractor landscaper, hey, this is really not a bad place, a good place to plant trees, not a good place to get, we should let this just be natural and not get in here and muck it all up. So to that point, the kind of the brainstorming kind of started to develop. The plant, uh, the plan that you have there is the feedback from the landscape company is going to install that, landscape architect took a look, kind of, I said, where are these going to go? Show me a plan where we're going to put these.
Yeah.
And that's the attempt that we made there. We also have some large boulders that we're going to be strategically placing, but, uh, that's a.
Last year, so they're not going to see the fence?
They're going to see, the mobile trailer park will see the fence for sure. That is something that they're going to look through their, back of their yard, and they're going to see full frontage, ten foot high, pressure-treated wood. It's, it's natural, it's clean, it's neat.
Yeah.
Uh, but these plantings would do very little to do any kind of, you know, uh, blind, any kind of wall drape or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, if it's pressure-treated, it'll silver out as it ages and, you know, fit into the background.
It looks real nice, actually.
Yeah.
It does, it's really nice, yeah.
So Beth had suggested that we meet in this forum and, and, uh, get it up for, uh, open discussion.
Right. Well, I mean, you have a better solution with extending the fence and lands left over to improve the landscaping on the front edge.
That's just good neighbors being good neighbors. It's probably thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars out of pocket for those guys to extend that fence that they were willing to do. Uh, and certainly just down front, that's just to make their approach in, uh, one forty area.
Now, do you have to go in front of conservation for the change?
There is no conservation commission, uh, implications in the project, there's only a fernal pool on the far opposite side of that.
The back side, yeah.
So as far as, uh, as far as I was under the understanding would be just a full single as-built with these plantings identified, so that the number, the count would be captured.
Right.
And I would make sure that the inspecting engineer is aware, if this is the direction you want to go, that these changes have been approved by the board. Right, and then you'd have to provide a, a new plan with the, showing the new plantings?
Yeah, that would be captured in the as-built, I would assume.
Okay, okay.
The intention on the front where the sewer went in?
Mm-hmm.
Are you going to try to close that space up altogether?
Um, well, as best we can with the plantings that we have to distribute. So the idea was to get that, uh, buttoned up, I mean, it's, it's, right now you could pull a car in off the road and park there, so. New England Ice Cream is sensitive to the concert venues and the golf activity and all that stuff that walks in front of their parcel.
Yeah.
So that was a concern, there's a couple of secondary, almost, uh, skidder rows that go up into that, other sections of that parcel of land, uh, that they'd like kind of a strategic three-yard boulder to pop out of the ground in, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we're arranging for that to happen as well. It just, it was, the wood chips was a good attempt, but it's, it's like, it's wooded, and then there's this hole, and then it starts to be wooded again, then you get down to Arnold Palmer Boulevard where it's all manicured.
Yeah.
So the, the folks from New England Ice Cream are looking for something, something that looks clean and neat, and then as you approach Arnold Palmer, and they kind of really dress up that front entrance.
Okay, so, what's the board's feeling on this? Sounds reasonable to everybody?
Seems to be a reasonable solution, I'm okay with it.
All right, and we'll need a motion?
I move to approve the changes to the landscaping plan as presented. I move to approve the changes to the landscaping plan as presented.
Second.
Subject to.
Subject to a final plan.
Confirmation inside.
Nice bill.
Yep.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jerzak?
Yes.
Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty? I also vote yes. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Just before you leave, just curious, what's your, what's your estimated time for having this completed?
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Everybody's cutting their turkey, we're hopefully be down the road.
Okay.
We'll be significantly complete the construction and then in the process of sign-on.
Okay. All right, we have a significant amount of minutes we need to prove, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Beth had sent these out in advance, and hopefully people had a chance to review them. Prior?
Yep.
So we'll start with the oldest one first, which is October thirteenth, twenty fifteen.
Do you have enough people here from that time?
We have, there's three of us who are there.
Shay, was that the one I wasn't there at?
No, you were there. Just a couple of clarification edits for this one. If I can give you my markup. Page three, we're under, it says seven thirty public hearing. There's a sentence down, this, the sentence that starts the diocese would like to, I think, it should be classified yet all as a residential area, which is repeated right after it, so somewhat of a redundant statement. You can leave it in if you want. And then on page four, like the third paragraph on the bottom, we're talking about the major issues. It says, number three, one-twenty frontage issue, a most buildable lots need, I think it's one-fifty. Most of our building frontages are one-fifty in town, except for Village Commercial. Then on page seven, the fifteen, and the, fifth sentence down says, it was noted, one hundred thousand dollars will be available, and I think that should say, in the property value agreement to a butters. And I know I could have a hundred thousand in perpetuity for two years, so. I, I think it went, it was for two years is what they were offering. And page eight, paragraph says, the planning board discussed peer review of the landscaping. Mr. Douglas asked if they could expedite the peer review process and assumed instead of this amount would be reimbursed to them, any unused amount would be reimbursed to them. Which is what the next sentence clarifies. These are my edits for October thirteenth. I don't know if anybody has any other edits. I sat on the, I sat on the train. I have plenty of time to read.
I read through them, I didn't even notice any edits.
All right, so do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Did you have any?
No, I didn't have any.
All right, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the October thirteenth minutes as adjusted.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second. I think, if you are not here, I think you need to vote present, so I'll take a vote, Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jerzak?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I also vote yes. All right, October twenty-seventh.
Do you want to sign up?
Yep. I didn't have any edits to October twenty-seventh. Nothing, anybody else did, huh? Any edits or comments on October twenty-seventh?
It's last year.
October, last year, right. We'll catch up.
We're getting there.
Any other edits, anybody else have edits? Okay, do I have a motion there for October twenty-seventh?
Motion to approve the twenty-seventh minute presentation.
Okay.
You got a second, Pat?
Second.
Can I ask for a vote and sign my name at the same time? Mr. Durant?
Present.
Mr. Jerzak?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I also vote yes. November twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen. One edit. On page two, under approval of minutes, second sentence, it should insert, Ms. Whirling said that there are multiple draft minutes in the.
Which one is this, sorry, the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth of November. That was the only edit I had for that one.
Motion to approve the October twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen minutes as adjusted.
Second.
That might be the one I wasn't at.
Twenty-fourth, was it?
Can't remember which.
Twenty-fourth.
It was in the first package that you sent.
No, you were there.
Okay. Second.
All right, I'll take a vote, Mr. Durant?
Present.
Mr. Jerzak?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I also vote yes.
I can't remember what I did yesterday.
This was a year ago.
I think that does it for twenty fifteen.
Yes, yes, now to April, fast forward ahead. I'm sorry, with my, I'm sending all the signings before I get myself.
Just don't want to lose it.
Before I get out of order here.
I didn't see April.
That was the only one I had.
Was that in the email, Beth?
Should have been, yeah. Which, which April?
Two email?
April fifth?
April fifth.
This one's fairly simple, if you want to take a look.
Is that the one that you were at?
I was at the open and close the meeting, that's all it was.
That's all it was.
I think GAC was looking for an extension at that point.
Uh, no, the Oak Street.
I don't know about this one.
I had no edits to this one.
Great.
It was pretty simple. I have a motion.
How do we do that?
What?
None of us were here.
Except for me.
I don't really think it's necessarily minutes of the meeting. It's more of indication to the town clerk that there really wasn't a meeting that occurred, for the record. So I don't think there's really a need to.
Devote.
Necessarily approve it, because it will just go on the record as there was really no meeting.
Okay, that works. All right, last one, April nineteenth. This was the last meeting of the, of the old board?
That's the one I was at.
You weren't there for that one.
No.
You might have to wait until.
I don't think I had any edits. This was a long meeting, too.
Yeah.
Okay. I do have some edits. On page ten. I was just confused after item number twelve. It says, Ms. Whirling indicated that master deed had been reviewed by town council and revised by the applicant. However, town council has not reviewed the revisions. She said they were revised by town council, and town council has not had a chance to review the master deed. So it was a little of a circular argument in there.
I was probably done reading minutes at that point, so you were correct. So what had happened was the master deed was provided by the applicant, which I forwarded to town council. Town council provided comments on the original deed, which I then forwarded back to the applicant. And the applicant, prior to this meeting, hadn't made the subsequent changes per the request to town council, and therefore town council hadn't re-reviewed.
So what if we, what if we, what if we add, Ms. Whirling said the, the original master deed.
That's fine.
Had been reviewed by town council?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can revise that to me.
Review, and then say the revised master deed?
Yeah.
All right, that's okay. Just a typo, go further down. Two sentences above the motion, it says, Ms. Whirling stated, it should be that, not this. That an as-built would be needed. And I think that was it. Do we have a motion on the minutes? I'm sorry, anything else?
Pat was not here, so you'll maybe have to wait until Joe comes back to.
Okay.
Prove the minutes.
Okay.
Your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So there are a number of meeting minutes remaining, and I will do my best to get you as many of them as I can before the end of next week, so you can get them on the agenda. And make sure that you all have an electronic version of it in case you need to make the modifications yourselves.
Okay. We have bills and warrants, under E. Oh, we don't, I just. Okay. We have bills and warrants, amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents. It calls two sets of payroll, and then amends debate of for Oak Street, Twenty Commerce Way, and New England Ice Cream reviews.
Motion to approve payables of nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I'll take a vote, Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jerzak?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Okay, planning board business and policy. One, a town meeting is the seventeenth. I am on vacation next week, so I won't be at a town meeting. So typically, we need to provide a vote, a statement as to the votes on the recommendations of town meetings. We have two, the two zoning articles that we are recommending are the one on the, the changes to the solar bylaw, and then the one today on the, on the notifications for zoning amendments. So I don't know, Beth, if maybe you could just write up a statement?
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Is, is somebody here going to be at a town meeting?
I'll be there.
Mr. Beatty? You'll be there?
I might be there.
You might be there.
I'm not, I'm positive.
Me too, I'll be there.
Be there.
So maybe.
I guess so.
It sounds like you're the, you're it for this one?
Yep.
I'll write the draft goes up and then.
And you can just, so usually when they, they, the moderator, the finance committee will read it, and then, then you'll get up and say, you know, here's, the town moderator asked how the board voted.
Mm-hmm.
You have to state that. Beth, will you be available if there's questions on the?
I will be at the meeting, the town meeting, so if there's any questions or you need any help, I, absolutely.
That's all right. I'm going to have you attest.
So.
They're not going anywhere.
So if there's questions about what the zoning, so typically what I would do, when the, they'll have the, the text of the zoning amendment up, I typically would just give a quick summary, like the intent of the, of the changes to the zoning bylaws to add additional protection for wetlands and make it compliant, so. So a quick, you know.
I think the public hearing notice for that particular bylaw itself actually is the summary of what was done, because it was five pages long and too much to put in the public hearing notice. So I can forward you that summary, and then clearly write up a summary from tonight's meeting on the other, as long as town council says it's okay.
I think you'll have to be careful on that one, say, the intent of this is to make sure we notify landlords, the butters, where there's a change to the zoning of their property. That's the intent of it. And that was, that was the issue that was, created all the anxiety of the last hearing. So, so while they can read, so the technical reading may be too technical. I think if you give a layman's term, summary what it is.
Sure.
That usually is, people appreciate that, they, okay, I see what you're saying. Makes it easier. So I don't think either of those two should be that controversial at this stage. And if there's any other questions, then Beth is there to.
Yell that?
Just to answer the questions, so. All right, so we need also a appointment for the planning board member to the capital planning committee, and a planning board member appointment to Serpent.
I can do the Serpent one.
You go back to Serpent?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Do we have any volunteers for the capital planning committee?
You're looking at me.
Come on.
Yes, yeah, I can.
Were you interested?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
What's involved with it?
I have no answer for that.
I don't know. I don't know how often they meet. But they're basically, they basically set the budget, right, for any, any, any capital purchases go to town.
I think Mr. Burgess was formerly the appointed member.
Right, so, fire truck or whatever, or a school needs something, that's, that's the, not the school, but the, you know, any other town departments. I don't know how often they meet, I don't recall them meeting all that frequently.
Okay.
You can certainly find that out, and you can.
Yeah, I can.
I mean, we can wait till probably next meeting, too, if you don't want to commit at this one, we probably can wait till the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Is Serpent still the fourth Wednesday?
Yes.
So do you want to commit, or you don't want to?
Yeah, I'll commit to it.
You'll commit to it, okay. So we need to vote on this, too?
If you could formally vote on the Serpent one as well, that would be.
Okay, so, so we have a motion to appoint Mr. Beatty as the Serpent, planning board member to Serpent?
Motion.
Yes, okay. All right, I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jerzak?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I also vote yes. As we'll take a vote on the other one, just to be consistent. Do I have a motion to appoint Chris Barrows as the planning board member to the capital planning committee?
Second. Motion.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Second, okay. I'll take a vote, Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jerzak?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I also vote yes. That is all of our, this is at hand, the minute upcoming.
Just one more thing.
Okay.
I know everybody's eager to go. Under tab F, I've provided you with a copy of the proposal that will be formally submitted to the planning board via an application process for the changes to the plan for the storage, Norton Self-Storage Facility. If you could just take a look at that and let me know if you have any additional comments or anything you would like to see on that plan that's not on the plan before they submit, I would appreciate it. You can just email me if you want.
Okay, um, just a question, is a butters notified?
It will be.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I can speak to Marilyn Benaski about this?
No, it would be a formal submittal for special power modification.
Yeah, okay.
They have to be notified, yeah.
Okay.
But before he, Mr. Larson submitted, he wanted to make sure there wasn't any, anything missing from this plan.
Wasn't he going to do a? A view from the street, wasn't he?
Mm-hmm.
Is that on here?
Mm-mm.
Okay. I'd like to see a view from the street if I could.
This will slow one of the butters, make sure the butters are there.
Is this the same one you mailed? And he's taken that berm down by about a foot.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's proposing to eliminate it for the most part, yeah. Because we had it, what, several feet high.
They've been in there doing some landscaping, uh, putting up some fencing, I think the top coat on the blacktop's done.
Oh, it is now?
And I think he's put some loom in the area where he's gonna, it's gonna be, says it's gonna be grassed. I think that loom's already in place.
Yeah.
He's surprised.
Behind the old berm.
So he's moving it forward even before we look at it?
Which is what he indicated he was going to do.
Well, that, that area was gonna be grassed anyway.
This, this area here?
Yeah.
I thought it was gonna be a parking lot, or?
No, it, it's, because of the size of the building, it required more parking, but obviously a self-storage facility doesn't need a huge parking lot, because everybody comes in and go to their, their unit, so it's, it was to be grassed anyway. It's a, it's technically a reserved parking area if you ever need it, but there's no sense to have a big paved parking lot on the front when it needs it. So that was, that was supposed to be grassed all along. So, all right, so that'll be, that'll be on the twenty-fifth, I mean.
Well, no, it wouldn't be, because I'd have to advertise it, and he still hasn't submitted it based upon the fact that he wanted feedback from the board.
So without, you have one more week.
I can certainly draft something for you, if you'd like, but, um, the next meeting is on November first.
October twenty-fifth?
Uh, twenty-fifth, and then the twenty, uh, the first of November.
Right.
Um, I think there's a schedule in here, so the twenty-fifth he would not be able to make, but November first, potentially, if it gets in the next couple of weeks, he could make that.
Otherwise, it's the fifteenth.
Yeah.
And when is, Phyllis is retiring?
November eleventh.
So our, our, the planning board secretary is also retiring November eleventh, so this is gonna be a little interesting without any staff, so. Hopefully we.
Is there anything new on Bank of America? We get a lot of questions about that.
I never had, he never had a tenant.
Yeah, I don't think he's gonna find anybody.
He never, I never really, because all through the discussion, we, he never had a, we asked, do you have a tenant? Not yet, not yet. And so I don't think he ever had a tenant, without a tenant, I don't think he probably can get financing. So, looks horrible. I don't know why, took all the trees down. Look a lot better if he left the trees there, but, and I don't know, at this stage, there's nothing you can do about it.
For the two years to get done.
What's that?
Two years, right?
Yeah. And special permits expire after two years. Yep, unfortunately, it's a hole in the middle of the, of the town right now.
I just want to give you a quick update on the Oak Street condominiums that, um, were approved by the board, they're well into construction now, and, uh, we were granted local preference for one of the units, um, by DHCD, and the paperwork for the lottery and submittal to DHCD has been complete and authorized to move forward, which means, um, right now there is paperwork available in the planning office, as well as, um, in the town manager's office, and kind of spread out through the downstairs here regarding the lottery for the two affordable units. So one will be local preference, and one is just a strict affordable unit. There are income eligibility requirements, but there's an informal meeting about the units on, um, November seventh at seven P.M. A lottery drawing on December thirteenth at seven P.M., and the applications are due by December fifth. And all this information is available in the planning office, town manager's office, and I believe it's been posted on the website.
Get the word out about this.
For reference, the local preference and affordability requirement was barely granted. The homeownership prices in Norton are almost equal to what it costs for an affordable unit, so. And the need among low-income persons isn't as significant in another community. So if there's another project issued with the requirement for affordable units through the planning board, then they'll have to reexamine whether there is actually a need.
For local preference?
For local preference and affordable units through the inclusionary zoning.
Yep. Okay.
We barely got it.
They, meaning, you know, a
D, DHCD.
DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so any other things from the board?
Has the job been posted, Beth's job's been posted?
Yes.
Is that the one that's on the website?
Um, there should be several on the website, I believe the positions.
One under employment, because that was back from when you got hired, that's not an updated one.
Right.
It's the same thing.
Actually, I'm going to a planning conference, October twentieth, so I could, if we have potentially
I could print something.
Print out a couple, I could, I can see if I can recruit somebody.
It's the same job description for the most part, yeah. The planning secretary, as well as the conservation secretary being advertised as well, and I believe there's a position in the treasurer's office, too. I'm not sure if you're all aware, too, we have a new building commissioner.
Yeah. Who's the new building commissioner?
Um, Brian Butler, who was the assistant.
Okay. So he's now full-time?
He is in, interim until the, he has a year to pass the test, if I understand.
Okay. All right, hopefully he'll hang around for a bit.
Um, and I just want to add, thank you very much, um, you guys were such a supportive board, and really a joy to work with, and I, I, that was one of the positive things about the job for me, is that I had a great, great planning board to work with, and I really appreciate it.
You really stepped it up, it was awesome.
Yeah, appreciate everything you did for us.
And I did indicate
Been a very nice year.
Yeah.
Indicate to the town manager that when you do hire someone new, be more than happy to help them through the process, to know where things are in the office.
That's very generous, thank you.
You know, we've been doing things here, and show them where things are.
Yeah, that would be helpful. That would be helpful.
More than happy to do that.
Right.
Thank you.
Very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, again, I just want to wish you luck in your position.
Best of luck, yeah.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
And you will continue to see the Norton planning board notes on my Facebook page.
Great, thank you, I'll be sure to keep up to date.